It's 12 noon. Going to call the first session of the 11th council to order. We'll have invocation by Dr. Garrett, the pastor of Hopewell Baptist Church. It's 12 noon. Going to call the first session of the 11th council to order.
Let's bow forward for him. Father, we thank you so much for allowing us to summon ourselves here, see change in our city. Father, as we come before you, as we come before you, that you accept us as who we are, servants in need of your direction. Bless this council, bless all of our meetings that we have, bless our decisions, allow our hearts and minds to be one with you as we serve the people of God. Lord, then, Lord, we ask that you cover our mayor. Let us present ourselves with excellence in everything we do in this city. Take those who are least, the last left out, and lift them up. Take those children that need your comfort and guide and keep them, and take these leaders and bless them in a mighty way. They will make choices that align with your kingdom building, align with your word. In Jesus' precious name we pray, in God's truth and said amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty On call via row, Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
James. McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Present.
Parker.
Present.
Rutherford.
Present.
Okay. There is a quorum.
Mr. Clerk.
I need it.
Sir. Motion to excuse Councilmember James for personal reasons.
I need a... Second by Councilman Carrington?
Goodman?
Aye.
McGinnis?
Aye.
Nicholson?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Rutherford?
Aye.
Carrington?
Aye.
Next, are there any amendments to the agenda? I would ask for a motion to defer items seven, eight, I'm sorry, five, seven, and eight for one week.
Could you please repeat that, sir?
I need a motion to defer items five, seven, and eight for one week. These are budget amendments. Since this is a brand-new council, these were discussed during the prior council. But if council members are uncomfortable, we can defer the items for one week so it can be brought up to speed on the particular items.
Okay. Can I ask the chair a question? Is there any time requirements on these particular amendments?
I don't believe any of them are, like, time-sensitive as far as that one week would be a problem.
All right. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to defer items five, seven, and eight for one week?
I make the motion to defer the items for one week.
McGinnis?
Aye.
Nicholson?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Rutherford?
Aye.
Carrington?
Aye.
Goodman? If there are no other amendments to the agenda, then I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
McGinnis?
Yes, or aye.
Nicholson?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Aye.
Carrington?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
So the amended agenda is approved. Next is approval of the minutes from the December 28, 2021 meeting. Need a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve minutes, December 28, 2021.
Nicholson?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Rutherford?
Aye.
Carrington?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
McGinnis? Now, the first part of the council meeting, and that's why I'm cheering the meeting into this part, is been handled, the selection of the council president. All council members have a ballot before them with every member, every person on the council's name on it. You're only able to vote for one person. If there's no one that wants to be considered to be the president of the council, you can let your colleagues know, and your name can be removed from the ballot.
I remove my name from the ballot?
I remove my name as well.
I'm removing Nicholson as well.
So then, the members that are for consideration for president are Carrington, James, McGinnis, and Parker. So if, and the way that this will work is if any council member receives four votes, then they're, you know, designated the president. If not, then the top two vote-getters will have a second round of votes, and then it will just be between those two people. Are there any questions? So then, if every member, president can vote.
Excuse me, Clerk, can we pass these?
Yeah, just pass. Do I have everybody's ballot? So Councilman Goodman votes for Carrington. Councilwoman Rutherford votes for McGinnis. Councilmember Nicholson votes for McGinnis. Councilman Carrington votes for Carrington. Councilman McGinnis votes for McGinnis. And Councilman Parker votes for McGinnis. So we have four votes for Councilman McGinnis. So we have a base for pro tem. So the process will work pretty much the same, except for we will remove Council President McGinnis' name from the ballot. And are there any other council members that would like their name to be removed for consideration?
Remove my name from the ballot, please.
Remove mine as well.
And remove Nicholson.
So then, that means the council members that are for consideration for President Pro Tem are Carrington, James, and Parker. So Councilmember Goodman votes for Carrington. Councilwoman Rutherford votes for Carrington. Councilman Nicholson votes for Carrington. Councilman, Councilman Carrington votes for Carrington. Council, Council President McGinnis votes for Carrington. And... I'm not sure yet which vote. Okay. So Councilman Parker votes for Carrington. So that's six votes for Council President Pro Tem Carrington. So to make this official, I now need a motion to make council, to make Councilmember McGinnis council president. I need a move and support.
I make the motion to make Councilman Mag- McGinnis for president?
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays. Now I need a motion to make Councilman Carrington president pro tem.
So moved.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays. So congratulations, Council President McGinnis and President Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Council President McGinnis.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle. We proceed now. The next item on the agenda, under organizational items for city council, is adoption of council rules. In the packets have been the existing 10th session rules, and I would like to entertain a motion that we substitute draft language with multiple amendments for consideration that are before you in writing.
I'd like to make a motion to consider the substituted rules as delivered.
I support.
It's been properly moved and seconded, Nicholson and Rutherford. So we now have a motion before us. What we'd like to do for this council and this honorable body and the community's benefit is review those changes. We start with the bulk of the existing rules for the 10th session, but have made some modifications just to improve the operations and flow of these meetings for the council's benefit as well as for the community's benefit. The meetings remain intended for Tuesday evenings at 6:00 p.m. We shall have regular meetings each week. The special meetings language stays the same, as well as posting requirements for regular and special meetings. Minutes of regular and special meetings. The minor change for the language substituted that I've drafted is that those that provide public comment, their names will be included in the record, not just the number of people speaking. Again, meetings remain open to the public, and we're so grateful for you to be here today. Minor changes have made in terms of the meeting agendas order, including instead of adoption of minutes, which sometimes can be multiple items, there will be consent agendas, so that way routine and regular items can be handled in a swift manner. For the community's benefit, we have, under discussion now, is keeping public comment at that three-minute opportunity for the public and agenda address at two minutes. And so as we go down, the next change that, for the substitute language that I've drafted here, is allowing the mayor or deputy mayor may be recognized to speak on council agenda items, which is a slight change from the previous session. We have, under presiding officer, language that I've drafted here that allows for, at any time during the session, a two-thirds affirmative vote of this council can replace a presiding officer, be it president or president pro tem, as necessary. And we continue the disorderly content, conduct, content, but later in the meeting, we do remove the prohibition on clapping, but we do encourage the community to keep it, keep it cool, because disorderly conduct in general can be outbursts that may involve hands. We have remained under the parliamentary procedure and Roberts Rules of Order unless these rules, the city charter, or state law supersedes that. Page five, much of the ordinances and resolutions and voting procedure language remains the same, as with citizen participation, just the omission of that word "clapping." Agenda address remains the same, as does public comment. I inserted a few additional words just to make it more clear, but it's the same practice with the signing up prior to the beginning of the meeting. A large change that you'll see are our council committees, which are, exist, so that way we can have more effective operations as we review, research, and contemplate changes, and come together on particular topics. So for the community's benefit, the new proposed council committees, which are comprised of council members. A, communications, engagement, and operations. B, economic development, housing, and planning. C, facilities and property. D, finance and personnel. E, law and the courts. F, parks, recreation, and public works. And G, public safety, health, and wellness. And the same practice will continue for committee reports. I did insert a few additional words, just so it's further clear on the continuation of that. The previous council's session rules indicated that they'd be reviewed on an annual basis, and we maintain that same approach. So the council, through our practice and operations, will be able to see the implementation of these rules and changes as needed, and then next January, we'll see if there's additional changes to make it work better for you, as well as for this honorable body. I'm sorry to go through all those items, but since this is substitute language that has been writ, that's drafted, I wanted to be able to allow the community, but also this council, not only a chance to see those reflected differences, but we now have a properly moved and seconded item of business, which is, are these rules and procedures. So now, it is open for debate. Would any council member like to be recognized on the speaker's list? I'd like to recognize Councilmember James as present and voting. Any council members wish to speak to these rules and procedures before us? Clerk Doyle, yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as relates to the consent agenda, what will the consent agenda consist of?
So parliamentary procedure allows consent agenda to basically, in an omnibus way or in one fell swoop, handle items that are routine or regular in nature. So that's where we would, if there were maybe four or five different meeting minutes that we were adopting, we would vote on them in a consent agenda versus individual items of business, just to allow for more efficiency. And for some public bodies, it might have monthly financial reports, or approval of spending, or credit card, roster, things of that sort. The school district for the city of Pontiac, in their consent agenda, it's personnel action items, so routine personnel actions that are taken, rather than, through the course of the meeting, allow it to cannibalize a bulk of the meeting. But we'll engage with Roberts Rules of Order and parliamentary procedure to make that work well. It's items that are regular or routine. Any council member has the right to essentially pluck items for the consent agenda if they need any debate. Otherwise, we vote up or down on the consent agenda at future meetings, not applicable for today. And in that instance, we just determine where on the agenda it needs to be discussed. The idea is that the consent agenda is there's anticipated unanimous consent, that the routine adoption of minutes will be uniformly non-controversial, or not needing further debate, really. Any further discussion? Any colleagues or the administration that wish to speak further? Further amendments are in order, so if there's any changes that need to be fleshed out further, or any changes that have not yet been proposed, now is the proper time. Hearing, no further, yes, Clerk Doyle?
Did you want to limit the number of special presentations, or no?
Thank you. So the previous session of council has on their order of business, special presentations. We maintain that same inclusion, that same spot on the agenda. We have not, at this point, added any numeric limitation on how many special presentations. However, there will likely come a time where we are in communication with the executive administration in terms of the volume, or when things are scheduled, so that way it makes the best impact for this body and the community to know what's coming before them. So if it's a matter of more informational or prospective items of business that'll be coming up, we inevitably want to see that before that comes before council. The, there is change in terms of every meeting will be a regular meeting, so it won't have that same study session, formal meeting rhythm, but it will be an exercise of us working through that to make sure it works well for this honorable body. But thank you for raising that. That is an opportunity, if this body would like to put a numeric limit on how many special presentations happen each week, but at this time, we continue with the practice that we would continue open dialogue and communication with those that have been submitted for consideration, and when we schedule them. Any further questions, debate, amendments? Hearing no further discussion, we now have a properly moved and seconded item of business before us, adoption of the council rules, utilizing the language that is before you. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
Thank you. That item is adopted. We now move on to recognition of elected officials. We have a beautiful, robust group with us this afternoon. Thank you for joining us, and many elected officials. We have the Honorable State Representative Brenda Carter, representing Michigan's State House District, that includes the city of Pontiac. Representative Carter, welcome. Happy New Year.
Thank you, and congratulations, Council President. To the honorable council, to the mayor, Honorable Tim Greymo, representative, always. Good afternoon. Congratulations to each and every one of you. I have with me Natalia, there she is, okay. I have with me two of my staff members. I have quite a large staff. Each one of you represent a new day in the city of Pontiac. I can't wait to work with you to help make this city the best place it can be. I want you to know that my office is here to partner with you. That's why I brought each of you a packet of information. Inside of the package, you'll find the Michigan Constitution, the U.S. Constitution, to remind us why we are all public servants. There's a 2022 calendar with a partial list of some of the things my office has accomplished. My contact information, so if you need me, will be there for you. There's a map of the state of Michigan, so you can always find your way home. Joining me today, and this is the heart of my office, and Mayor Greymo knows this because he was the representative previous to me. Without an incredible staff, my job would be almost impossible. With me today is a young man who's been with me since day one. He's the director of my policy, as well as my chief of staff. Many of you may know him, Jonathan Wertheimer. If you don't know him, get to know him. He's awesome. Also with me is my community liaison, Natalia Emerson. Another, both of these young, all three of us are OU grads. Unable to join us today is Alex Zigmuth. He's the director of constituent services. He's the first person that you will call when you contact my office, and he's very efficient, as well as a large number of interns. Mataya Lewis, Andrew Compton, Nikki Goodnight, Megan Airline, and soon, Rosalyn Reed. She was one of the student ambassadors that traveled to Japan. So we are here to serve you. Please reach out to us anytime you need us, and thank you again, and congratulations. Now, before I step away from the podium, Natalia is going to say the same thing in Spanish. Please.
Thank you for the kind introduction, Representative. Good afternoon. My name is Natalia Emerson. I want to present these comments in Spanish in order to reach a greater number of our citizens within our wonderful community. So, buenas tardes, alcalde Greymo y concejales, felicidades. Cada uno de ustedes representa un nuevo día para la ciudad de Pontiac. La representativa Carter está emocionada de trabajar con ustedes para ayudar a que esta ciudad sea el mejor lugar posible. Nuestra oficina está aquí para colaborar con ustedes para asegurarnos que este sueño se haga realidad. Por eso les hemos traído a cada uno de ustedes un paquete de bienvenida. Dentro de cada paquete encontrarán una... uno de ustedes un paquete de bienvenida. Dentro de cada paquete encontrarán una constitución de Michigan y de los Estados Unidos para recordarles por qué se postularon para sus cargos. Encontrarán un calendario del año 2022 con una lista parcial de los logros de la oficina de la representativa, la información de contacto de la representativa, y un mapa del estado de Michigan para que siempre puedan encontrar su camino a casa. Hoy la representativa se encuentra acompañada por miembros de su personal, incluyendo a Jonathan Wertheimer, su Director de Políticas y Jefe de Personal, y a mí misma. Me llamo Natalia Emerson y trabajo en relaciones comunitarias. Quisiera mencionar a otros miembros del personal de la representativa que no tuvieron la oportunidad de acompañarnos el día de hoy, incluyendo a Alex Ziggman, nuestro Director de Servicios Constituyentes, y a nuestro nuevo grupo de pasantes, Makaya Lewis, Andrew Compton, Nikki Goodnight, Megan Airline, y Rosalyn Reed. Estamos aquí para servir. Por favor, comuníquense con nuestra oficina si necesitan de cualquier cosa. Gracias por su tiempo, y de nuevo, felicitaciones. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there other elected officials that wish to be recognized at this time? We have Pontiac's Oakland County Commissioner Angela Powell.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm honored today to be here, to join you on your first meeting. I'm humbled and I'm excited to work with you all, council, and also the mayor. Looking forward, moving forward. I will, you know, Representative Carter came very prepared. She gave y'all packets and everything. But our staff has been out. I will be touching base with all of you all to give you some updates of things that we're working on at the county. And for you all, I think most of you all have my cell phone number, but for the community as well, I can be contacted at (248) 214-6395. That is my community cell phone number. And then if anytime you reach out to me by the cell and you can't get me, you can contact the Board of Commissioners, and we have wonderful staff out there that will find us. I don't have a staff like Carter does. It's just me. And I have to depend on our wonderful staff that we have at the Board of Commissioners. And my phone number is (248) 858-0100. Again, that's (248) 858-0100. And I'm just gonna say, I thank God, it's a new day. So let's go, everybody. Y'all have a good one.
We are joined by the Honorable Gil Garrett, Pontiac School Board President, and Superintendent of the School District, Kelly Williams. You have the floor.
Thank you. Greetings. Greetings, Council President McGinnis, I gotta get used to saying that, and Mayor Tim Greimel, and this wonderful body, 11th Council. I bring you greetings from the Pontiac School District. I'm going to introduce for part-time Superintendent Kelly Williams. She's going to give you a little bit of information about the district, and I'm gonna come back and share some things with you as far as committee, and some of the things that we're going to be working on, so.
Good afternoon. Welcome, Mayor Tim Greimel, President McGinnis, city council members, my former trustees. I'll miss you. We're so excited to welcome all of you. Pontiac School District has gone through many challenges, as most of you have known. But we are excited about what we have on the horizon as programs for career pathways for our students, out of a deficit of $52 million, passing a bond, upgrading renovations to ensure that our students have 21st century learning opportunities as the surrounding districts. This is an exciting moment. This is a new year, and we're excited about the future partnership with the city. I know that in the future, what's forthcoming is going to be some exciting career pathways that we can partner as far as recreation, as well as opportunities for our students. Again, we all know the students are the cornerstone of the city, and we're excited about these new opportunities. Again, thank you and welcome, and we're excited for the change.
Thank you, Stu. The purple bags are for you to stay with you for the next four years, because we plan on filling them up with a lot of information. To my two colleagues who are now over at City Council, this is a remarkable day for the city. This is the first time in history where we've had two sitting council presidents now over at the City Hall, sitting on a dais together and ready to move both the district and the city together as one. Because if you don't do that, then we don't have anything at all. So our kids are important, our citizens are important, and understand, I want to thank the citizens for making this change. We plan on having two new trustees come on at the end of this month. And so we're going to continue the work. We're going to continue the partnership that we have, and we look forward to the committee meetings where we can dive down and see how we can merge us together to move our city forward. Thank you. God bless you, and this is a wonderful day.
Thank you, President Garrett and Superintendent Williams. Any other elected officials that wish to be recognized at this time? I'd like to acknowledge Pontiac City Council President Emeritus Kermit Williams, who is with us. Happy New Year. And we also had Pro-Tim Emeritus Randy Carter that was previously with us as well. Happy New Year to him. Hearing no further elected officials that wish to be recognized at this time. Mr. Clerk, were any requests for agenda address received prior to this meeting? Thank you. We now are on page two of the agenda, a resolution to request to publish a request for proposal to conduct a forensic audit. Is there a motion to approve such a resolution from this body?
Second, I motion to approve the resolution to publish and request for a forensic audit.
It has been properly moved by Councilmember Parker, seconded by Councilmember Goodman. So we now have an item of business for consideration before us. We will defer to the administration for context.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Number one, I wanted to just explain the rationale behind putting this item on the agenda. I'm then going to defer to Darren Carrington, our Finance Director, to actually get into the meat of the process of the RFP, what the RFP actually would do. But in terms of the rationale for bringing this before you, we obviously have a new mayor and entirely new city council, following eight years in office by one consistent administration. We believe it's important to make sure that we're reviewing past financial practices of the former administration, particularly in light of questions that have been raised by the public, by the former city council, about whether certain funds were expended or allocated in accordance with the budgetary guidelines set out by council over the years. So this is to make sure that we understand with great clarity the financial footing and foundation that both the mayor, that is to say, my administration, and city council is inheriting, so that we can make the best decisions financially for the city as we move forward. And with that, and with your permission, I'd certainly welcome Mr. Carrington sharing his comments about the nature of the RFP.
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
And as a point of personal privilege, if we could ensure phones are muted, silenced, off, et cetera. Thank you, Director Carrington, who, my understanding, has no blood relation to President Pro-Tim Carrington.
We have confirmed that, so we can publicly state that. We're just waiting on the final DNA test, but I think we're pretty confident in stating that here. I did want to just take a moment to congratulate everyone, the new members of the council. Obviously, you guys are going to be fulfilling a very important role in the city. And I know, I not only speak for myself as the Director of Finance, but all the other members of the administration. We look forward to working with you all and helping the city progress and serving the citizens of this great city. As the mayor alluded to, we do have this request for proposal in front of the council this afternoon. I just want to speak a little bit more, and give a little more context to some of the mechanics of how we're going about this process. We would be looking to issue this to the general public in terms of qualified accounting and auditing firms, so that they can respond. We have drawn some parameters for this request for proposal, and we would look to, and we expect we will receive a number of qualified bids. We're hopeful that we will receive a number of qualified bids. As we move forward, we'll be providing some additional specifics in terms of how we're going to evaluate this RFP and the team that will be a part of the evaluation process. We'll provide council with more details and more information on that as we move forward. And our expectation is that, once that evaluation process is done, we would then present a proposed firm to conduct this service. So just wanted to give you some of the basics in terms of where we are and how we are expecting to approach this. And obviously, if there are any questions, we're stand prepared to answer those, or get the information necessary and provide that.
Thank you to mayor and administration. Council members, by a show of hands, who would like to be included on the speakers list? President Pro-Tim Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Thank you, Mr. Carrington. Just a few questions concerning this process. What is the timeframe once you guys decide on auditing a company? How long will it take from the start to the end of that process?
We are asking for no more than six months. A lot of that will be depending upon the final scope, but we do want to hopefully do it in a shorter timeframe than that. But the maximum that we've included in the RFP is six months. But my hope is that we can do it in a shorter timeframe. But again, that's going to depend upon selecting a firm and working on our final scope of services with that selected firm.
Okay. And my second question is concerning, does this allow for a deep dive per department to go into the transactions per city departments?
It potentially would. Again, all of that is going to be dependent upon the final scope. And as, you know, we select a firm and we identify exactly where we're going to focus and, you know, look to target in terms of the overall operations of the city and the transactions that have been involved in the city over the last several years, you know, we'll identify where we think that that deep dive would take place. But, you know, we would have an opportunity, obviously, to take a look at all aspects of our operations.
All right. Thank you, sir. No further questions, President.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I just have one question. Do you already have any idea or any thoughts as to what companies you'll be selecting, or is there a group of companies you've already looked at?
No, we have not. We obviously would not include two firms. One is our auditors. That's Raymond. And this is just because of, you know, obvious conflicts. And then the other firm that would not be participating would be Plant Moran. They serve as our in-house accounting consultants and advisors. So those two firms would not be a part of this process. But we have not, you know, identified or pre-selected, if you will, any firm or firms for this process.
Thank you. Other council members? Councilmember Nicholson?
If any of us have firms that we'd like to make sure are included in that process, should we send those suggestions?
You sure can. And I'll be sure to provide the council with my contact information, and certainly would welcome that, those names and recommendations.
Councilmember Rutherford.
He already asked my question. Thank you.
Excellent. Any further council members wishing to be recognized? With that, a final question. Can you share for the taxpayers' benefit and this honorable body, the current cycle in which the finances for our municipality are audited on a regular basis?
Sure. So our fiscal year runs from July 1st of a given year to June 30th of the following year. So for the current fiscal year, this fiscal year began July 1st of 2021, and the fiscal year within June 30th of 2022. Oftentimes, we refer to it as fiscal year '22 or fiscal year '21-'22. So we're on a July 1st to June 30th time cycle. For auditing purposes, under the state law, we have six months from the end of our fiscal year to have an audit complete, which, given our fiscal year ends June 30th, we have until the end of December, the end of the calendar year, to complete the audit. We recently just had our audit completed a little more than a week ago, and I will be providing you all with copies of that audit. We did receive a clean audit opinion from our auditors, which indicate that everything was, you know, reflecting, that we were operating, and the numbers were consistent with the auditor's expectations. And there were no findings, no corrective findings. So, you know, from a timing standpoint, generally, the audits are going to be done sometime, usually in between, you know, sometime between December 15th and the end of December, so that we can meet the state deadline. We're required to have that information posted on the state's treasury website, which we have done. And we also are required to complete some disclosures, some filings on the state's website. And we, you know, normally do that process towards the end of the calendar year.
Thank you. Any further requests to be given the floor? Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion before us. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
The motion carries. Next item of business is a resolution to approve the city of Pontiac's submission of the grant application titled Matty McKinney Hatchet Park Redevelopment to the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Park Improvements Grant Program for Development of Matty McKinney Hatchet Park in the amount of $100,000. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
I support.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rutherford, seconded by President Pro-Tim Carrington. So now that it's been properly moved and seconded, it's an item of debate now. For the sake of acquiring a great deal of the information that can be addressed, I'd like to defer to mayor and administration.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I'm going to allow Alex Born-Gesser on our staff, who handles grants and grant writing for the city, to get into the nuts and bolts here. But the one thing I do want to emphasize is that this is simply allowing the city to apply for county grant dollars. So there's nothing about this item on the agenda that involves spending or allocating city dollars. It simply is allowing us to move forward with the submission of a grant request to the county for $100,000 in county funds for the purpose of updating, renovating, modernizing Matty McKinney Hatchet Park. And in addition to Ms. Born-Gesser, I understand that Dustin McClellan is present as well, if needed. He is the president of the Pontiac Community Foundation, and they are acting as the fiduciary for purposes of park fundraising.
Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year. Thank you so much for having me. The administration kindly requests the approval of the city of Pontiac's submission of the grant application titled Matty McKinney Hatchet Park Redevelopment to the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Improvement Grant Program for the development of said park in the amount of $100,000. And as the mayor has mentioned, this is simply an approval of our application, and gives us the ability to provide a certified resolution from this governing body to be submitted with our application. The city of Pontiac is proposing park improvements to Matty McKinney Hatchet Park, classified as a neighborhood park located in the Unity Park neighborhood on the city's east side. In 2021, the city of Pontiac adopted a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The purpose of this plan is to provide a new vision for future allocation of resources and to create a vibrant and sustainable park system. This plan includes these improvements as proposed in this grant application. The city of Pontiac, in partnership with the Pontiac Community Foundation, has worked with an expert designer and project engineer to develop a comprehensive project plan that fits the needs of the surrounding neighborhood and the broader community, as well as addressing critical aspects of sustainability and green infrastructure, along with ADA standards to assure accessibility for all users and visitors regardless of age and ability. The city administration chose this project proposal specifically because the park redevelopment is shovel-ready, and upon award of this grant will be fully funded in partnership with the Pontiac Community Foundation, who is providing the matching amount required by the grant for.
Thank you. And without objection of this honorable body, if we could have the Executive Director of the Pontiac Community Foundation provide additional context, welcome Executive Director McClellan.
Thank you to our honorable mayor, council president, and Pro-Tim, and members of this 11th council. It's been our delight to take on the responsibility, part of that, in partnership with the city, to provide neighborhood investment projects, to raise funds, to be an aiding arm to our city. And so we took on this project here in the last couple of years, and we have been delighted to raise close $250,000 so far to redevelop this park project in partnership with Sir Emblin Co., one of our local Pontiac business owners that is a landscape architect and West Construction, who is also a Pontiac-based business. Construction, who is also a Pontiac-based business. And so our hope is to complete this project by July 1st of this year and to have the opening of the park at that time with the various elements that are happening. And that is a whole-scale redevelopment. Every piece and portion of that park will be redeveloped as a state-of-the-art redevelopment that can be modeled in other parks, and also, of course, to honor Matty McKinney Hatchet for her long-term work in the city. And I can ask her any other questions you have about the project, but I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Councilmember Rutherford, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mr. McClellan. I just have one question. So we can verify that they do have the actual $250,000 available, because previous times in the previous council, the skate park had to show that they had actual funding. If we asked for the proof for the funding to be available, you could show this to us, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other council members that wish to be recognized? Councilmember Nicholson.
I just want to thank you for your work on this. I've seen the renderings. It's gorgeous. The eye for accessibility, to me, is really amazing, especially as our park system has aged. We've done what we can to accommodate people with different needs, and I can say that it's really been a clean eye, and I just wanted to commend you on your work so far.
Thank you so very, very much.
Councilmember James.
I would like to commend the Pontiac Community Foundation as well. This is one of the first, this is the first, public-private partnership that we are having the opportunity to hear and to look at. And I know that there are going to be many more, but I just want to commend this organization for the work that's been done to move this project to the point that it is today.
Thank you. Other colleagues that wish to have the floor?
Council President, if I may, I just want to give one additional comment.
Yes, please.
To mention Commissioner Powell's work to ensure that we have access to these funds and others, as well as State Rep. Carter for her work. She has an appropriation that is going through right now to hopefully help support this project and other park projects.
Thank you. To Mayor and Administration, we've got the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Park Improvement Grant Program. Is there any recent history of the municipality successfully either pursuing and successfully being awarded funds from this, or would this be a potential new opportunity for our municipality, if any context can be provided?
This is a new opportunity, and the NOFO was released a few months ago. So this will be our first time applying for a grant of this kind during my time here at the city, and based on my records, the first time we'll be applying in this capacity.
These are new grants. This is the first year that they have been offered.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other council members that wish to have the floor? Mayor Grimal.
I would just add, is my mic on? I would just add that I have had conversations with the county and county commission over the past month, and I do think there's some likelihood that they will allocate some funds for a skate park in Pontiac, so that has been underway as well. There's been some movement in that direction by the county commission, but that was not through a formal grant application process, so that has yet to be finalized. But I did, since you asked the question, just want to be transparent that there may be, and already has been some work done, on another opportunity to bring some county dollars here for recreational opportunities, particularly for our young people.
Excellent. Any additional council members wishing to have the floor? Here are no further discussion. We proceed with the roll call vote on the motion. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Mr. Clerk, I abstain, because I am a member of the board of the Pontiac Community Foundation.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, one abstention.
That motion is adopted. We now come to item 10 of the agenda. The city charter for our illustrious municipality states in 4.103, "For Deputy Mayor, the mayor shall appoint, with the approval of the council, a deputy mayor who serves at the pleasure of the mayor and performs the duty of the office during the absence or temporary disability of the mayor." That is the governing document for this municipality. And with our new mayor, I now give him the floor to share his choice and rationale for his appointment for deputy mayor. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that many of you are already familiar with Mr. Stevens, but I am very excited about the selection and nomination of Mr. Stevens to serve as our deputy mayor. He has a really impressive background and track record of working in government, and in particular with municipalities. Perhaps even more importantly, he is a native son of Pontiac, knows our community very well, cares deeply about our residents. But for a little more detail, especially for the public who might not be as familiar with Mr. Stevens, I do just want to highlight certain aspects of his background. He graduated from the University of Michigan with his undergraduate degree. He has an MBA from Wayne State University. He also has a postgraduate certificate in economic development from Wayne State University. He is a Michigan master citizen planner, and he also is a certified economic developer. In terms of his actual work experience, he worked here at the City of Pontiac for several years. He also worked for several years for the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. He worked for Farmington Hills as the economic development director for that community. He worked in Clayton County, Georgia, doing executive director work for the Development Authority there. And most recently, he's been the economic development director in the City of Flint just for a little under a year now. So he has not been in that position very long, but I know that he's very eager to return home to Pontiac, roll up his sleeves, and really get to work improving our community, both in terms of community development work and economic development work, but ultimately making sure we're expanding economic opportunity for everyone in Pontiac and improving the quality of life for all of our residents. The other thing I would note is that our last deputy mayor was paid roughly $116,000. However, the budget for this fiscal year for the city does allow a budgeted amount of approximately $120,000 for the salary of deputy mayor. Specifically, the budget for this fiscal year in the city allows for $119,829 as a salary for deputy mayor. Because we have not been paying anywhere close to that salary over the past six months, there is quite a bit of additional funds available for the current fiscal year on a pro-rated annual basis, and I'm asking council to approve Mr. Stevens' salary at an even $120,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Without objection, I will now allow, entertain a motion to approve, the resolution to approve the appointment of Kalfani Stevens as deputy mayor.
Moved by trustee, not trustee, I'm so sorry. Thank you, I'm still wearing my school war hat.
I make the motion to approve Kalfani Stevens for deputy mayor.
I support.
It's been properly moved by Councilmember Rutherford and seconded by President Protam Carrington, so we now have a motion on the floor for the body and the community's benefit. Clerk Doyle, we'll still have a debate and an opportunity to hear from the deputy mayor candidate, but could you read the resolution, since it's brief, but it's straightforward?
Resolution to approve the appointment of Kalfani Stevens as deputy mayor, whereas the city charter requires the city council approval of the appointment of the deputy mayor, whereas the city council has reviewed the qualifications of Kalfani Stevens for the position of deputy mayor, now therefore be resolved that the city council approves the appointment of Kalfani Stevens as deputy mayor, further approves the companion employment agreement with an annual salary of $120,000 per year and other benefits as set forth in said agreement, and further authorizes the mayor to execute said agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there any debate on this motion? President Protam Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Mr. Sefani, could you please come to the mic, please? Thank you so much, sir. It was a pleasure, actually, getting this chance to talk with you prior to this meeting. But for the community's benefit, I would like to ask you a few questions, if that's possible.
Yes, sir.
The city's employee morale here has been damaged somewhat over the years. How would you improve the employee morale in the culture in City Hall?
That's a great question, President Protam. First, I just want to thank everyone for allowing me to be here. I would like to thank Mayor Grimal for his faith in me. And to answer your question, it's actually fairly simple. A lot of people will repeat the mantra that people are our most important asset, but if people are your most important asset, that means that you must actually invest in people. And so that is exactly what I plan to do. In all of the places that I have worked, my staff has always been the number-one asset for me to invest in. And what that means is, doesn't necessarily mean that everyone is going to go and get an additional degree, but it does mean that everyone is going to have opportunities to better themselves and to further their career, to further their personal ambitions, because if you are happy and healthy, you are going to be a much more productive member of the team.
Thank you. And one more question before I pass it on to my other colleagues. What was one of the most difficult-to-achieve-but-gratifying milestones in your career?
Most difficult-to-achieve-but-gratifying milestones in my career? You know, I would actually say it would be working on the Kellogg grant in Flint, Michigan. So as Mayor Grimal said, I am just finishing up working with the City of Flint through the WK Kellogg Foundation. The city had a four-year grant. I came in after two years of that, and so I've been working with them for just, literally just under two years. And in that timeframe, we were able to bring, we were able to create a pipeline of well over $200 million of investment. We closed on over $84 million of that. We were able to extend the timeline of the Kellogg grant, because it was originally going to expire December 31st of last year. We were able, through our good fiscal management, to roll that over to extend through 2022. And in addition to that, we were able to obtain many other grants through the state of Michigan and the federal government to leave the city in a much, much better position than it was when I arrived there.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, President Protam Carrington. Other council members that wish to have the floor? Councilmember Goodman?
So the first question I have, taking that your current, well, current employment is in the City of Flint, I did want to ask, you know, from the perspective of where you are currently, what is something that you believe that you've learned working for the municipality that is Flint, that you can, you know, utilize in your job down here in the City of Pontiac?
Oh, great.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember. So that's a great question, and one of the things that I have definitely learned from my time in Flint, again, as I talked about the WK Kellogg Foundation grant and also some other federal grants that we, so that's a private grant, but federal grants that we worked on, there is a definite opportunity with the federal government through the Economic Development Administration for defederalizing some existing funds in the city that will allow us to then take that money, have a completely different reporting requirement, and it actually allows us to do more with the funds than what we currently are able to do with those funds. Additionally, things that I learned while I was working in the City of Flint, I became a member of the Michigan Venture Capital Association, and we put on an amazing program where we had venture capitalists meet with everyday entrepreneurs in the city. We called it Coffee and Conversations, and the idea was just very simple. Ninety, probably 95% of the entrepreneurs in that room were not, well, 100% of them were not ready for venture capital. 95% of them were never going to aspire to be ready for venture capital, but it reset expectations and it opened up doors for individuals to find mentors. It opened up doors for that 5% of individuals who did have exit plans and wanted to go for venture capital. It built the bridges for them to be able to start down that path and know what it was that they needed to do. So that was a program that I started there that I would love to bring to the City of Pontiac as well.
On follow-up, yes. Councilmember Goodman, you still have the floor.
So with that being said, I know your last job, of course, was economic development. When it comes to the City of Pontiac, I know, of course, you'll be working a lot with Mayor Grimal. I guess the way I put it is, what is your economic development mindset when it comes to the City of Pontiac, especially making sure that we do so in a way that actually benefits the residents of Pontiac, opposed to, of course, as I point out, you know, people with money and other interests, how do we make sure that when we're developing the City of Pontiac, that we're doing so for the residents that currently live here?
I love that question. So the first thing that you should understand about me is that my undergraduate training is in historical studies and linguistics with a minor in French. My master's is an MBA with a focus in finance and marketing. And then you've heard about the career trajectory that I've had that has been primarily focused on economic development. But that undergraduate degree and that master's degree have changed the way that I look at economic development versus the way that, which you will hear from most economic developers. So most economic developers are focusing very heavily on business attraction and job creation. If you look at my LinkedIn page and the resume that you have in front of me, I tend to, I choose to focus on community development and community investment. And so what that means is, instead of trying to convince XYZ Company why they need to move across the imaginary line, my focus is on saying, hey, what is here in this community? And what does this community want? What does this community need? And then providing the resources to get those things in place, because once a community has what it needs, all the rest of it will come. Right? So a lot of state agencies actually have a policy, or at least in the past had a policy, that they would not invest in retail development. And the reason being, their feeling was, well, retailers are in it to make money. They will go wherever the, wherever the business is, wherever the population is. And so everyone in this room is sitting here scratching their head, thinking, well, that's silly, because I want to go where there's retail. I want to go where there's business for convenience. And so that is what I focus on. I focus on the people in the community and what they demand and what they want, and then all the other things are partial to come along with that.
You have the floor, Councilmember Goodman, still.
So one final question. So I take it, the way I'm reading it, that you have been employed by the City of Pontiac before, correct?
Yes, sir.
And of course, this was during the time period in which the City of Pontiac had an emergency manager, correct?
The majority of it was, yes.
So I have heard from some residents that have some small concerns when it comes to, of course, the time period in which you were employed by the city. And not that I personally have any, you know, major concerns, because I have looked over your resume, and of course, have had conversation with you, but I kind of do want to, I guess, bring that up and see if you have any responses to, of course, people in my district who do have some concerns about, you know, you being employed during, you know, that wonderful time in our city.
No. Wow. I guess the, there is nothing that I'm going to say at this podium that is going to 100% alleviate anyone's concerns about that. I will say that anyone, you know I have an open door, so anyone who really wants to sit down and have a conversation, and they have specific questions or concerns, I'm happy to go over those with them. I will give an example, though, of what may, may help to have people understand my mindset. So of course, during that period of time, everyone knows that the City of Pontiac sold the Silverdome at an auction. And so I can tell you that the way that whole thing came about, the Silverdome had been up before, before that auction, so actually, we'll have to go back a couple of years. The city council had the Silverdome basically sold, and there were changes that were made at the last minute to that deal that caused the investor to walk away. After that, we worked with a number of different investors, and I will actually say that I was probably a thorn in the side of one of the investors, because I continued to say, you know, the property is here. because I continued to say, you know, the property is here. We have agreed on the price. You just need proof of funds. Once you have proof of funds, I'm happy to take this proposal to council and get it sold. That individual could not come up with proof of funds. And so we were never able to get it sold to that particular individual. Fast-forwarding to the auction. The city had the property listed for sale, wasn't getting in a lot of bids. The real estate agency that had it listed for sale made a proposal to put it up for auction and to put it up for a no-reserve auction. Now, what a no-reserve auction is, is that whatever the final price is, that is what it is sold for. And the idea behind that is that you're going to work up a frenzy. And everyone in that room is going to be so excited that they're going to forget their business training, and they are going to be caught up in the moment and go higher and higher and higher. I tried to explain to the emergency manager at the time that no businessperson worth their salt was going to be influenced by a fast-talking auctioneer. Everyone who comes to that auction is going to have a final price of how high they're willing to go because they know what they're going to do with that asset. I was the junior person in the room, and so my voice was heard, but not considered. And we know the end result of that. I will say that after that, however, we had another situation where a different developer wanted to have a very large tax break called a Renaissance Zone. And I actually was adamant that the Renaissance Zone could not be put in the location that it was going to be put because what a Renaissance Zone does is it actually truly abates taxes. We hear about tax abatements all the time, but usually what those are are really abating future income or future taxes. What a Renaissance Zone does is it actually takes the existing tax and brings it down to zero. And so I was adamant that that could not be done because the existing taxes were used to pay an outstanding bond debt. And that if we did actually do a Renaissance Zone, then it would be on the citizens of the city to pay that existing bond debt, and that was not, that was just not feasible. I actually, you know, went to the mound and that won, and I won. But hopefully, that will give a little bit of insight to my thinking and how I operated when the city was under emergency management.
Thank you. Councilmember Rutherford, then. Councilmember Parker?
What is your policy for access and accountability for community members seeking employment?
Well, so I'm always accessible. We talked about that. As far as community members seeking employment, you mean seeking employment with the city of Pontiac?
Correct.
Yes. So I am not yet familiar with the city's HR rules and regulations, but I will say that my policy is very simple. And that is, whatever the city's policy is, that is the policy that I will be following.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have actually two questions. Having worked in Pontiac before, having traveled as much as you have, what is the appeal of Pontiac to you now?
Oh, wow. Oh, that's easy. So first off, Pontiac is home. Born and raised, go Chiefs.
Yep. You know.
Order, order in the chambers.
Yeah.
But beyond that, you know, Pontiac is just an amazing community. If you pull out a map of the city and you just look at all the neighborhoods, you may not know this because of the various states of repair. Every neighborhood has a park in it. Now, that park may be a city park. It may be a school with additional land that's grass. But it was planned that way. It was planned for the community. It was planned for the people. We talk about Y Track, Woodward, the Loop, and, you know, constricting downtown and killing downtown and all of these things. But if you go back to when the Loop was created, the Loop was created because during shift change, you couldn't get from one side of town to the other safely and quickly and efficiently. And so, you know, that was put in to actually accommodate everything that was just the going on in the city and happening at the time. Bodet Park, all right? So you have this amazing, beautiful water scenery that's available to everyone. I mean, the city just has so many great assets and amenities that I want to help, I don't want to say restore to former glory because, you know, when we look at the past through rose-colored glasses, we end up missing a lot of the darkness. So instead of focusing on former glory, I really want to say, you know, you have all of the, we have all of these assets right here. And they just need a little bit of attention so that everyone else can see them, appreciate them, and then we ourselves can actually do a better job of being stewards of them and bringing ourselves to where we want to be. So that, what attracts me to Pontiac is the, everything that is here, the people, the built infrastructure, and the opportunity.
Thank you. One more question.
Yes.
So having said all that, what do you see as the low-hanging fruit that you can gather up once you're in place?
So low-hanging fruit, that's a great question. Low-hanging fruit is actually going back to what I said before. People, personnel, City Hall morale. Making sure that everyone who is here is supported, that they have the tools to do what it is that they do. I say all the time that mechanics exist for a reason. All right? So I may know, I may know what's wrong with my car, but I guarantee you that I am not the person to fix it. I put gas in it. I change the oil on a regular basis. And the tire monitor tells me when it needs air in the tires. Beyond that, I have a dedicated professional that I go to who does all of the actual work on the vehicle. But in order for him to do that, he needs me to trust and give him the opportunity to do his job. So all of our employees here need a trusting environment, and they need to be able to go forward and understand that we are here working together. So that's the low-hanging fruit.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker, anything further? Thank you. Councilmember Nicholson for a first time, and then Councilmember James for a first time.
So as you're familiar, because we've talked, my background is HR.
Yes.
And I'm going to flip the script. This is a decision that you have to make as well to come here, right? I mean, you've got, you're gainfully employed, and you're making this decision to leave. How, and what is it that you need from us and you'll need from the mayor to be successful in this role so we make sure that this gets off to the best possible start?
That is a great question. So the first thing, obviously, that I, the first thing, obviously, that I need is confirmation. But after that, really what I need, after that, really what I need is an open mind and a willingness to work together. There are definitely going to be things that individually we agree on. There are going to be things that as a body of the whole, some of you will be for, some of you will be against. But as long as we can come together and work collaboratively and understand that all of us are here for the same reason, and that reason being is to serve the citizens of the city of Pontiac to the best of our ability. We can do everything that we need to do. And things will pass, things will not pass, things will get changed. But as long as we are working collaboratively, that's what I need.
Councilmember James?
Yes, I dream of a downtown Pontiac with lots of people walking around, lots of activity. How do you feel about bringing placemaking to our downtown so that we can get, you know, our downtown to a place where it is, again, a place of destination?
Wow. When I was at the city of Pontiac, there was a thing called NSP-2, so Neighborhood Stabilization Two Program. Those are federal dollars. And what was originally supposed to happen with that money, from the city's perspective, is that it was going to be spread equally across all of the districts. And so foolishly, recklessly, I took my job into my hands, and I said, that's the stupidest idea I ever heard. You can do that, and it will bring political expediency and happiness to everyone in the council, and it will make absolutely no change at all in anyone's daily life. There was not enough money in that program that if it were to be spread across the entire city evenly, that any change that was made would be visible by anyone other than the immediate neighbor of the property that had any money invested in it. And so what I said was, yes, there are items across the city that definitely need to be invested in. But you need to take a bulk of the money, and you need to create a place. And instead of trying to create a place whole cloth, you should go to where the "there" is. And that was downtown. And so with those funds, what we were able to do was invest in what became the Lafayette Lofts. And from that investment, you had renewed and spurred investment in the Strand Theater. You have new bars and restaurants that have opened up in downtown. And so I think that shows you my track record and belief in placemaking.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman for a second time.
So a question I was spurred on by something earlier involving the Woodward Loop. Of course, as many of you know, I'm probably the youngest person on this council, born way after.
Point of order, you are.
But, so I do want to point out that, like, my family did work for GM. My grandma worked for Fisher Body for 27 years. So I do have a love for GM. However, I do, you know, want to ask you, and you'll of course bring this up. The Woodward Loop was, of course, a related part to the fact that GM was the major industry in the city. And we did that as a, you know, of course, a sympathetic relationship between the city of Pontiac and GM. And we allowed industry to dictate development in the city. And at the time, it was, of course, the idea that made the most sense. However, you know, going forward, we have to be a lot more mindful when it comes to allowing industry to influence majorly development in a city. So of course, you know, how will you help the city do its due diligence to essentially do as much as we can to future-proof the city of Pontiac? That way, you know, when the next council, you know, 40, 50 years from now, is saying, oh, well, that decision worked then, but kind of doesn't help us out now. So I guess.
No, so that's a great question. And going back to a conversation that we had and something that I'm always willing to talk about and really push forward is that if we believe that the city is going to be here 100 years from now, we need to make plans that are 100-year plans. And so what do I mean by that? We can talk about election cycles and expediency and what's popular and, you know, what will play now. But none, not none, very few of the things that we are experiencing today are out of the blue and unheard of. We have over 2,000 years of economic recorded history. I mean, if you really, really want to get crazy about it, you know, you probably have about 6,000 years of recorded history. But I'm just going to go to 2,000. We have about 2,000 years of recorded history where we can see industries, we can see cities, we can see regions that have grown and died based on whatever the industry was there. And so we know, and we could see the patterns that were happening. But it was expedient to make decisions. For example, it was expedient to say, hey, the car industry is telling us, we don't need rails. We just need buses, and they'll give us all the buses that we need. And that's not a Pontiac issue, right? That's a Michigan issue. Chicago, Philadelphia, New York, DC. I mean, you name the major metropolitan area, they have rail systems. And in southeast Michigan, we're still struggling with, how do you create a rail system? Well, the reason why other places have it is because they weren't thinking expediently. They were thinking, how, if we are going to continue to grow and thrive and have the population that we have, what is it that we're going to need in the future? And so that is how you, air quotes, future-proof your development. You don't make the decisions that are of expedient and okay right now. You make the decisions that are planting seeds for your children's children's children.
Thank you. Other councilmembers that wish to be recognized for a second time? With that, a brief commentary, a question for the mayor, and then I'll give the floor to the mayor. This is a very unique experience that, as HR professional Nicholson and many of my colleagues, but also the community who's had been gainfully employed, you know, been an executive or manager in corporate America, it's a very surreal process for one to be in a public setting, under the Open Meetings Act, essentially be confirmed for your employment. So to Councilmember Nicholson's point, thank you for your willingness to put yourself through that very unique and sometimes awkward process. My question for Mayor Grimal, and then you can feel free to integrate your answer, but you have the floor as well. What is your vision for how you will engage and structure the deputy mayor going forward? You are the CEO of this illustrious and historic municipality, so would love to hear your vision. And we won't hold you to it verbatim, since it'll be an evolution process and you're days into your new position. But without objection, let's use this as an opportunity at our first meeting of this first session of the city council to give a warm round of applause to our new mayor for the city of Pontiac, Mr. Tim Grimal. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
That's very kind, very kind, Council President, very kind, everyone. Thank you. But we've got business to attend to here, so sorry for that digression. The, when I went about trying to identify the right deputy mayor candidate, I had two things that were imperative in my mind. I wanted somebody who knew Pontiac and had a love for Pontiac. That's number one. And number two, I wanted to make sure that we had somebody who had robust, meaningful, in-depth municipal government experience, somebody who was capable of running the day-to-day operations of the city. And so I'm excited to have Kelfani, Mr. Stevens, on board because he certainly fulfills both of those expectations. But in terms of how I foresee him fulfilling his role moving forward, certainly, he will be in charge of the day-to-day operations of the city. Department directors will be reporting to Mr. Stevens as deputy mayor, as well as to me. He will be my right-hand man in virtually every foreseeable way. But he's also going to be interacting directly with the community. Mr. Stevens has a love for the community, so he won't just be cloistered here at City Hall administering the day-to-day operations of the city and supervising the department heads and other staff here at the city, although that's important. But he'll also be working on the broader vision of the city, helping us develop long-term plans that are about addressing the needs of residents. That is what any community is about, is its people. And I know Mr. Stevens shares that value and will be helping us develop plans that improve the quality of life and economic opportunity for Pontiac residents. But beyond that, he will be accessible to the community. He will be interacting with the community. And that's part of one of the visions and values that I've emphasized for a long time now, which is about accessibility and transparency with the public. We are here to serve the public. The public is our boss. And I know that Mr. Stevens shares that view and is eager to get to work to make sure that we have a person-centered administration that's focused on the well-being of Pontiac residents.
Thank you very much. As a final opportunity, any councilmembers that wish to be recognized for a second time?
Mr. President, also, I,
Yes.
I should emphasize as well, I, if I want to first thank the council for all of your excellent questions, and all the questions were really, really great. As someone who, and those who were active at the time know this, as someone who was a fierce critic of the emergency managers that were imposed on our community, I did want to take some time just to underscore some of Mr. Stevens' answers to the question about emergency management. I would emphasize two things because certainly it's important to me that we have an independent thinker here who certainly did not share the values of emergency managers. thinker here who certainly did not share the values of emergency managers who were imposed on our community. And I, this is really not so much for council because I know you have become a little bit familiar with Mr. Stevens, but it's really for the public, and I want to emphasize these two items about Mr. Stevens. Number one, he was not initially hired by an emergency manager. He was hired by a duly-elected and empowered mayor, and so he started work here before the emergency managers were imposed. I believe that's correct. Is that right, Mr. Stevens? And number two, he's too polite to say this publicly about a former employer of sorts, but the truth is that Mr. Stevens disagreed with the vast majority of things that the emergency manager was doing. He remained here for some period of time because he was trying to be some degree a voice of reason and moderating influence on some of the most egregious and extreme decisions of emergency managers. And he talked about the effort to establish a Renaissance Zone, which he successfully was able to avoid by persuading the ultimate decision-makers not to go in that direction. But Mr. Stevens is a principled person, someone who believes firmly in local democracy and somebody who regularly took emergency managers to task while he was working here at the city during that time. So I have every confidence in Mr. Kalphani's love for our city, love for our residents, and belief in local democracy.
Thank you. I do want to point out for the community prior to proceeding to the vote that it is very intentional that this deputy mayor approval vote is happening at the first possible meeting of this new session of council. We want the new mayor to be able to have every opportunity at success, and it's obviously in terms of the operations of the executive administration. This will be a crucial member of that team. I thank the mayor who stayed in touch prior to his term beginning with individual incoming council members to hear from our perspective, to ensure that it was a decision that wasn't a surprise, was done in concert and collaboration, as hopefully the question process here reflects for Mr. Stevens' consideration, but also for the community's benefit. Hearing no further discussion on the question of approving the appointment of Kalphani Stevens as deputy mayor, roll call Mr. Clerk. Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Thank you, council. Thank you. That brings us now to public comment. If the clerk or whomever has it in their possession can provide to the president pro tem, the members of the public that have signed up for public comment. It is again a three-minute limit, and we're grateful for your cooperation in allowing for your fellow residents and for this honorable body to be able to hear all members of public comment. With that, for the first time of many, many times for this 11th session of the Pontiac City Council, the floor is yours. President Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First, it's Billy Swazer, and then if I pronounce his name wrong, please forgive me. Nayya Fan will be right after Ms. Swazer.
Hello, I'm Billy Swazer. I'm a longtime Pontiac resident. I came here as a baby, and I've lived here mostly ever since. Maybe one year in Auburn Hills, but the rest of the time I've lived in Pontiac. On the south side, in the projects, in Harrington Hills, right around the corner from Silverdome. Then on the west side, then on the north side, and I now reside in Parkside Preserve in the north off of Telegraph. I live in Kathy Lee James's neighborhood. Some of the questions that I, I want to, first of all, I want to congratulate all of you for taking the time out of your lives to dedicate time to the city of Pontiac. Congratulations, I love most of you, but Mr. Goodman and Ms. Nicholson, or Nichols, I don't know you. I look forward to knowing you and discussing things about Pontiac. Some of the things I'm interested in are the Phoenix Center deal. One of the things I hate, and I really applaud this, is that we have 100-year mortgage on that damn Phoenix Center. There is no reason that we should be in debt for 100-year on a public-private partnership, and it sounds like it's some shady stuff going on. The other thing is that $1 million that the city of Pontiac pays to attorney firms, I don't see any reason why the city of Pontiac would have to pay $1 million a year to have attorneys. If we're not fighting people all the time, if we're not suing people all the time, why are we spending $1 million? Attorney fees are one of the highest things that we seem to pay, and we don't have any problem paying it. The PyRec, PyRec is Pontiac Youth Recreation Center, and UWM has provided, said they would provide us with facilities for free, and I don't understand why we keep on want to trespass at PyRec Center and do that. The other thing is, and my niece told me this the other day, was why track is supposed to be a two-way? Now, this has been going on for years. We're going to do a two-way downtown, we're going to do a two-way. I just want to know, if we're going to do a two-way, you're going to put the signs up, you're going to let us know, you're going to let the neighborhoods know? Because of course, during COVID, I, my car's broke and I can't be traveling down. I have to ride with other people, so if y'all would just let me know how that's going to go. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Nayya Fan, is she here? Okay. Ex-council president, Mr. Kermit Williams.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It is so good to be on this side. You guys look so beautiful sitting up there today. I do want to congratulate Mayor Grimal, Council President Mike McGinnis. It's good that council stays in District 7. Good to see you, Pro Tem Carrington, and thank you for the wealth of experience and all you new council people that are here. You guys will not be seeing me weekly, so don't have to get used to this occurrence, but I did want to come and publicly commend you guys on your service to the citizens of Pontiac and wish you not only the best of luck, but let you know that I will be praying for you. You guys have made an excellent decision with Kalphani Stevens as deputy mayor of the city of Pontiac. I don't know how tremendous, people who don't know Kalphani, know that the work that he's going to do is tremendous. He did our first retreat as council when we came on and onboarded us about government and the city, and we encourage former administrations to use him, so I'm so glad that he's here and is the new deputy mayor of the city. I think that was an excellent pick. I do want to take a couple seconds to thank you guys for voting to conduct an audit. I suggest that you guys look not only into the youth recreation, but also the DPW department and how that is operating going forward. The last thing I would also say about the audit is it's imperative that you make sure that the wish of the previous council was that all of the AARP money, the ART money that you got from the federal government is in the coffers. So if you can get those bank statements to make sure that you guys have that $30 million plus in there will be helpful. Mike, I have some potholes that I want you to look at, but I'll talk to you personally about that. But again, I want the community that's been listening, who have supported me over the last 12 years, to get behind the new council and the new mayor and give them the help that this city so desperately needs. I know a lot of times you get weary in well-doing, but this is their first day that they're on the job, and so I ask that you guys not only give them their thoughts, your prayers, but if there's some expertise that you can volunteer to give them, re-engage and get plugged in to move in Pontiac in a greater direction, so as Kalphani said, we can have some for the next 100 years. Again, Mike, I got some potholes, and so I'll be addressing that. But again, thank you, Pontiac, and congratulations to all the new administration.
Next, we have Veronica Taylor for public comment, and then Raymond Katz.
I am very proud to see that the city voted and got good people, and we are praying for you all and a mayor that's going to run this city and help and collaborate together to grow this city to what it needs to be. Now, I was in a bad car accident here on Perry Street, and I need you all to please see about getting those bike rolls together. And that's very important because I could have died and I could have hit a child that was riding on the bike on December 20th. I have a very bad whip flash and other parts of my body that's hurt. We need to make sure that don't nobody be able to make another left turn into ongoing traffic there to be hurt like I am damaged now. Secondly, I want y'all to understand that I am deeply, deeply glad that this city and this community is going to come together and help bring healthness to this city. This city been crying for healthness for a long time, and now we got good people that we can hold accountable to do just that job. And I'm looking forward, not only as being y'all voter protection woman that I've been for the last three years, to do that. I'm proud of city of Pontiac. When I leave this city, I could be able to say the new council of the left district. I won't be hearing rumors, I will be hearing truth that y'all bringing stuff to the table. Thank you. And mayor, I am so proud to say and give you respect from my team, which is Films for Democracy, as well as for our voter protection woman, Erica Pips. We will be glad to be working with you now. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Raymond Katz, and then our last public comment would be from Mr. Chuck Johnson.
My name is Raymond Katz, and my primary residence is in Pioneer Highlands. I'm here to alert the city council to the condition of the bridge at Thomas Lane and Clinton River Drive in District 1. I live, my primary residence is in District 2. In a recent engineer's report that was completed by Vanish Engineering for the city of Pontiac, it was determined that the bridge needs immediate replacement. Inspection along with Waterford Pontiac Fire Department is a result of my request that the city inspect the bridge. I want to thank Vern Gustafson, Director of Pontiac Planning, of the planning, Pontiac Planning, who facilitated these reports. I'd like to briefly read you just one paragraph from each of those reports. This is from Waterford Regional Fire Department. Traditionally, whether a road is privately owned or falls under the jurisdiction of a city-road maintenance agreement, our ability to respond to an emergency that occurs on the private road or city road is dependent on the road being maintained properly, meaning the ability to support fire and emergency vehicle weights. The situation is different, in fact, that there are three structures beyond the Thomas Lane Bridge. The bridge is not being properly maintained in a condition that can sustain the weight of our fire apparatus or EMS vehicles. This in turn leaves all property behind the bridge with limited fire protection and delayed medical response. The fire department would like to see this bridge replaced or repaired so that we can provide proper fire and emergency service coverage to the existing properties and the Clinton River Trailhead. That was signed by Fire Chief Matthew Covey of the Waterford Regional Fire Department. My second paragraph is from Vanish Engineering. It says, according to federal departments of transportation, a failed condition is defined as a state of deterioration beyond corrective action to restore the bridge back in service. In this case, we believe that this criteria is met for Beam 3W, third beam from the west. As such, our recommendation is to immediately close the bridge to traffic to avoid injuries and our liability to the city. A new structure should be immediately programmed to replace the closed bridge. I am the property owner on the south side of the bridge at the Clinton River Trail. I have repairian rights at the bridge. It's owned mutually by myself and the city of Pontiac because they own the property north of the bridge, which is in District 1. I own two homes and an office and a workshop on the property south of.
Five-second warning?
Pardon?
Five-second warning.
I would like the city council to take this issue under immediate consideration to replace the bridge. I'm willing to pay my fair share with respect to this project.
Thank you, sir. That concludes your time for public comment.
Thank you.
Mr. President Pro Tem.
Mr. Chuck Johnson, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience and those of you at home watching by television. As always, I come to this mic on council meetings and voice my opinion as I feel it's a need for on occasions, but I am so very happy today to see the folk who's been at this table now, from the mayor right on down, including our lawyer. I know that we're going to have a great city going forward now. Our deputy mayor that's been selected, these are great hearts and minds that we're going to be able to live with, citizens of Pontiac. Not only with that, as I look around the room, I see some of our employees that has the smarts to keep and help this council keep our city going forward. I don't know, Mike Wilson and the other individuals here. We have, we have some, we have some swell brains for the next four years, citizens of Pontiac, and I'm still very proud to have you, Mike, in my district, District 7, because we have a lot of work for you in our area. And if we get, if we get District 7 going, I think the rest of the city is going to have the great improvement that we're looking forward to, and as well as the downtown in that area. And Mayor Tim, it's a pleasure to see you in that seat. I know that your experience and your knowledge, based on the comments that you've made and from what I know about you, I know that we're going to have a strong, strong mayor that's going to be able not only to go to the county, to the state, to the federal government, and bring whatever's needed to help this community in the way we need it. Now, I've been an advocate in this city for more than 40 years. As a matter of fact, I look around the room, I think I'm the senior in the room, and I have a lot of knowledge of things that has happened over the years with different things that was talked about here even today with the deputy mayor's comments. And I'm mindful of these things, and I'm going to bring them out as time goes by. I'm going to voice my opinion here. Sometimes folk don't like what I say, but I say what's in my heart and on my mind, and that's the way it is. Thank you very much. Bless all of you and good luck.
Thank you. President McGinnis, that concludes our public comments.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Carrington. We now proceed with mayor clerk and council closing comments. Want to relay for the community's benefit, the rules and procedures that this council has adopted during this meeting amends what previously was a three-minute limit for closing comments for the mayor is now for this session, seven minutes. With that, for a first time, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Tim Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I want to begin just by congratulating all of the new council members. I am absolutely, yes, please. I am just thrilled to have such a great group of capable, experienced, knowledgeable, dedicated, amazing, truly amazing people on city council, and I am thrilled to have the opportunity and privilege to work with you over the coming four years. Let's give them another round of applause. And in particular, I want to extend my congratulations to President McGinnis and President Pro Tem Carrington on your new leadership roles with council. Really, really thrilled for both of you and looking forward to working with both of you in particular as we move forward. I also wanted to just make a quick announcement. We, as I think all of you know, the Pontiac Public School System and a number of other school systems have closed due to COVID. school systems have closed due to COVID. Most of those closings are through January 18th. I decided today to close our operations at the Pyrex Center at least until January 18th due to COVID. Staff there obviously will still get paid and will find ways to utilize them on a daily basis, so we're not just going to push them out the door without any notice. But we think it's the right decision for the health and safety of our young people not to have young people in that building, just as schools are not having schoolchildren in those buildings. There is a broader question about the use of the Pyrex Center moving forward, especially in light of the fact that the lease was never approved by the previous city council. And I can assure you that we are looking at those details and our options and the best path forward. We will be doing a deep dive on that over the next couple of days and making a decision and possibly bringing a recommendation to council as we see appropriate. So, I want to let everyone know we're working on that. Ms. Swazer, great to have you here. Thank you for your public comments. I know one of them related to the Pyrex. Hopefully, my comments have helped answer that question. I want to also assure you that we're going to be doing an immediate, a deep dive on the status of things at the Phoenix Center and our options moving forward there, as well as the arrangements with our attorneys and the amount we've been spending on attorney fees. So, we're going to hit the ground running, looking at all of these items and doing a comprehensive assessment. I also want to say that as the new administration looks at the proposal to reconfigure the Loop, I want to assure you that if the Loop is reconfigured, we will make sure to do a comprehensive job of informing the community about alternative routes and putting up appropriate signage and that sort of thing. You know, first, we have to get our sea legs under us here since this is our very first day in office and we need to come up to speed with exactly what MDOT is proposing and some of the details around that before we make any other decisions. But if we move forward with reconfiguring the Loop, we will certainly do so in a way to make sure that the public is accommodated to the best of our ability. Beyond that, I want to thank the Honorable Kermit Williams for your amazing service over many years and everyone that's part of the outgoing council for their service. I want to thank Mayor Waterman for her service over the past eight years. I want to thank Kermit of Honorable Williams, Mr. Williams, Ms. Taylor, and Mr. Johnson for your very kind comments today. So, thank you all. And lastly, Mr. Katz, thank you for your comment. I was unaware of the situation with the bridge. I appreciate you bringing it to all of our attention and I can assure you that we'll be having a conversation with EPW this week about how best to address that moving forward. So, many thanks to everyone who's in attendance, especially those who shared public comment with all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clerk Doyle, you have the floor for closing comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to congratulate and welcome Mayor Grimal and the members of the city council. I commend the mayor on his excellent choice for Deputy Mayor Kefani Stevens. I believe it's a new day in Pontiac. The clerk's office looks forward to working with the mayor and his administration and working for this honorable body. I've already been in talks with Mayor Grimal about the medical marijuana process. And with that being said, my office is working on a transition report that we'll be presenting to the mayor and the city council. In the clerk's newsletter, and I see some of you already have it, there is an update about the process for the public. Also, there's information on the upcoming special election. And if anyone is interested in running for the charter commission, petitions are due on January 18th by 4:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. For a first time with this session, we now are at closing comments for this honorable body. Per the rules adopted, council members have three minutes for their closing comments. And for District Number One, the Honorable Melanie Rutherford, Councilmember Rutherford, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll try it again. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. Maya Angelou once said that we may encounter defeat, but we must never be defeated. Today is a new day in Pontiac. We have opportunities on both sides to work with each other beyond fear and to use our faith. I first want to comment on what Mr. Katz was saying about the bridge. I will be reaching out to you also. I want to give District One my direct cell phone number if you live in District One or you just want to call me because you have nothing to do. My phone number is (248) 3900-591. Again, my phone number is (248) 3900-591. This week, we'll be having a meeting with landlords at the Alley Cat. One of our guest speakers will be the Honorable Mr. Gil Garrett. He will be speaking there. So, it's a group of landlords that will be meeting. In the coming weeks, you'll be seeing a website that is being built on my dime specifically for District One. I also will be talking about Conversations, Coffee and Conversations, which will be starting in February. Coffee and Conversation is an opportunity for people who live in District One to say, these are my concerns because it's no I in team and we're working together. Lastly, which is most importantly, if you can't wait to Coffee and Conversation, I have Meeting with Mail, which is a Zoom website that is being set up simultaneously. I will be, I'll be able to, excuse me, lay it out for you in the coming weeks. It's called Meeting with Mail. It's a Zoom meeting. If you don't feel comfortable coming in person, I want to be accessible and I want to be accountable to each of you in District One. I thank you for this opportunity and thank you again. Have a great day.
Thank you. Councilmember Brett Nicholson, District Two, closing comments, sir.
Thank you. Thanks. I am excited to be here. I'm excited to see a lot of our District Two residents. I just wanted to say thank you for telling me when that spoke, but also thank you to anyone since the election day. I've already started work. We've got a lot of phone calls going back and forth with residents. I've got a lot of phone calls into City Hall. So, if you're in this room and you owe me a call back, please do that. I will keep calling. So, thank you to everyone and I'm excited to be here.
Thank you. Councilmember Mikhail Goodman, District Three, closing comments.
Hello, everyone. Again, most of you probably may or may not know me with, again, me being the youngest person on this council. Unless you lived in my district and you got it of my mailers, then you definitely know me, hopefully. But for those of you who don't, I'm a 21-year-old who got into this honorable body. I actually grew up mostly on the east side of Pontiac and the Riverside, actually. And the fact that I still call it the Riverside means you know what generation my parents and grandparents are from. I taught here in the city at ATAP for multiple years after I graduated. And really, I'm an educator and a community and political activist at heart. So, that's, you know, a little bit about me. Of course, hopefully, you'll learn more about me in the coming weeks, but that's something to grasp onto. One of the things I really want to say, brought up by, you know, what was mentioned in public comment, is that I firmly believe that being on council, the job at hand is to be a representative of the people who rely on you. We were voted to do a job to represent the people of the city because not all of you can sit behind this, on this dais. And it is our job to represent you the best way that we can. And that is a firm belief that I have coming forward. And one of the things I also believe, especially in regards to, you know, talking about the Woodward Loop, one of my personal philosophies is that nothing that is, that will directly affect the daily lives and the general well-being of the people of the city should be done without having proper communication with and consideration from the residents of the city whenever possible. So, going forward, that will be one of the ways that I especially operate, is making sure that I do everything I can and hopefully do everything to help sure the council and mayor's administration does everything that it can to actually respond and reach out to and do the work of the city on behalf of the residents, opposed to any other influences. The city serves and exists to represent the citizens and that's what I have come here to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Kathleen James, District Four, you have the floor.
Hello, everyone. I am very happy to be here, to be serving as the councilwoman for District Four. I want to say, I want to be able to congratulate our new council president and President Protam. Congratulations. Apologize for not being here at the first part of the meeting. I also want to say that, you know, I'm excited about representing District Four. I got my first resident call about 12:07 a.m., New Year's Day. And there was a resident, an elderly lady, who was concerned about the noise and the gunshots, the fire, you know, the, the, yes, the firecrackers and all that. So, you know, we've already hit the ground running. And as Mikhail said, you know, this is all about representing our constituents and being able to make decisions, not just for our districts, but for the best interest of our city. And I'm really excited about this opportunity of working with this great council and with the mayor and new deputy mayor. I want to say that we will be, you know, because of COVID, one of my first priorities is to set up a district council meeting for District Four. We are going to start that on a Zoom remotely because of COVID. So, you will be getting information about that, but we will be starting a resident Zoom meeting as soon as possible. We are also going to be providing a monthly newsletter to District Four, just to keep you updated on what are the crucial issues and decisions that we are making on this council, because I want you to be informed of what I'm doing. I think that's about all that I have. I also want to say happy birthday to my grandson. I am missing his festivities, but I want to say happy birthday to my grandson, David.
Thank you. Representing Council District Five, the Honorable William Parker Jr. Councilmember Parker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, everybody. Well, let me start the way I normally start. Oh, give thanks unto the Lord, for he is good and his mercy endured forever. For those of you who don't know me, I am a pastor and I am unapologetically a pastor and unapologetically a Christian. And so, first, I want to thank God for allowing me the privilege and giving me this assignment to sit in this chair to help to guide and direct his people. But there's also some people who I did not get to thank when we were installed on Sunday that I want to make mention of. First, I want to thank Councilwoman Patrice Waterman, who orientated us and gave us such guidance and direction. Council, ex-proud council president Kermit Williams, who came by and gave us some instructions. I want to thank the legal attorneys, Sister Monique Sharp, for her assistance in making sure that when we came in, we didn't come in empty handed. She gave us all that she could and helped us be able to do what we do. I want to thank the members of my committee that helped me get here. First and foremost, Sister, the power, the tower of power, Sister Veronica Taylor, who walked the streets with us in the hot sun and the cold and did what needed to be done. I want to thank her for her efforts and even when she, I was at the hospital when she went to the hospital, helped even get in the car when she went home and I'm glad that, and I told her to stay home and get better. But as you can see, she's always involved and active in the things that happens in this city. I want to thank people like Sister, Brother Sam Madison, who walked the Galloway Lake Estate with me while he should have had his knee surgery. I want to thank Sister Jean Matthews, who walked the Harrington Hills Estate with us. I want to thank Sister Lucy Payne, who walked Phil Stone Village. And Pastor Rodney Talbot, Sister Margaret Kilbren, Sister Leona Patterson, Sister Kathy Desrow, all of those who helped me get to where I am today. I am entirely indebted to each and every one. Even more important, I want to thank the voters, those who voted for me and those who did not vote for me, because now is that time that I know that there are some people out there, there's at least a thousand of us out there that is a concern about District Five. And I want to see all thousand of you at the meetings that we're getting ready to schedule because we need to move not only our district forward, but this city forward. 2020, 2022, I'm looking for a double portion blessing for this city. I'm looking for a double portion change for this city. We have a team that is willing and able to work together and trust and unite and come together in teamwork and trust. And if we can trust each other and we can work together as a team, I guarantee you, we will bring about change. That's all I got to say this evening. Be blessed, have a great day.
Hailing from District Six, President Protam, William A. Carrington. You have the floor.
Good afternoon. Today is definitely a new dawn and a new horizon. I'm definitely honored to sit in this seat. To my marvelous sixth district, thank you. To the entire City of Pontiac, thank you. I don't take this opportunity to serve this community lightly. I promise transparency, accessibility, integrity, and fairness from the district seat. I also like to congratulate my former trustee and colleague from the Pontiac School District that is now council president. Thank you, sir. And I look forward to serving with you. I'd like to congratulate the fellow council people. Thank you so much. You guys ran a beautiful campaign this summer. So, please give a round of applause for each of these councilmen. To Mayor Grimal, I look forward to working with you. I've known you over the years. You have also supported me over the years and definitely, this is a collaboration of spirit that you will get from the council. Thank you. And just one more thing, I'd definitely like to thank my parents that definitely could not be here. Mr. Carl Calhoun and Brenda Calhoun from Flint, Michigan. Over the years, I ain't always done the right thing, but one thing that my parents never done is gave up on me. So, I sit here today and it's emotional for me because those that know my journey know just hard, hard, I tried to turn my life around. And if it wasn't for my family and friends of the family continuing to pray for me, I wouldn't be here today. I could not sit in this seat without all of those prayers. And I'm very happy today. I'm so excited. I'm so excited that I get the opportunity to serve this beautiful city. And thank you.
Well, good afternoon. I'm Mike McGinnis, hailing from District Seven. I want to thank my colleagues for this unique and humbling obligation, responsibility, but opportunity to serve you, for we have a very substantial monumental task before us, as does our new mayor and the entire team that works for this great city of Pontiac. So, I just want to thank you for that and for the fellowship that will come in the four years. There is so much work that we will have to do, a lot of time. And on that note, I want to emphasize again the gratitude of our district for councilperson Kermit Williams, most recently President Kermit Williams, who sacrificed 12 years to hold this seat, thousands of meetings, thousands of hours, endless conversations. It was a great personal sacrifice. The city is better for it and I'm just grateful for that and for his willingness to share insights as I transitioned into representing the seat. Congratulations to our mayor and now our deputy mayor. It's a brilliant opportunity to collaborate with you and to echo President Protam Carrington's sentiment. Collaboration is what the people are yearning for. It's what this council will strive towards. We won't always get it right, but we will continue to strive to improve and to collaborate and to do even better on behalf of our residents and the entire city. We had our swearing-in ceremony on the 2nd of January. Thank you to those that were there in person at the Strand or saw it virtually. You can still catch it if you'd like. At that gathering center, Gary Peters announced that he will be moving his senatorial office to the City of Pontiac. So, we look forward to more word coming there. That's excellent news. I also had my father join me on the stage, Louis McGinnis. He's the reason why I am in Pontiac today. He has himself gone through a great deal of resilience and challenges. His battles with mental illness in terms of him being a patient at the Clinton Valley Center here in Pontiac had a very early formative impact on my life. But there's just so much joy that he has also brought when it comes to, when he first moved to Pontiac, my parents meeting in Pontiac. He actually worked at Pontiac General Hospital. That's why he first moved here in the late 1970s. He has been a resident here for decades. He's just across the street from District Seven and District Six. But I just wanted to celebrate him and thank him for making the time to be there. As was referenced, I currently had been serving on the Pontiac School Board for five years. I will be leaving that seat. Our final meeting is January 10th and just wanted to show and share that since there have been some questions, so that way we can provide as much focus and opportunity as possible on the very weighty tasks ahead. Want to give a shout out to all of those in District Seven and beyond who help are the reason why I'm here, the voters. God bless you and thanks, even though it'll be a challenge. But I want to especially emphasize the support of Brenda, of Herb, of Jason, of Gloria, and so many others that put in a lot of time and put in a lot of sacrifice for me to be here. But my time's out, so I'm going to rule myself out of order. That concludes this closing comment. This is the first session of many. The 10th council had 269 formal sessions, and so that's a lot. But that also doesn't reflect the committees, the community gatherings, the neighborhood engagement, a great deal of sacrifice- A great deal of sacrifice awaits us, but it is for such a beautiful purpose. And if there are no further motions on the floor, is there a motion to adjourn this first meeting of this eleventh session?
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Support Carrington.
It has been moved by Councilmember Rutherford and seconded by President Protam Carrington that the meeting be adjourned. Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Well, I opened my mouth, so we're roll calling the adjournment.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes. Meeting is adjourned at two zero nine p.m. Thank you. Two oh nine p.m.[1796.88]